Dodgers threw them an open house. The Dodgers Veterans Day batting practice boasted some big names in Dodger baseball, both past and present. But this day wasn't about the big names, but the big heroes who have given up much for the freedom we enjoy.
During evening flight ops, there was a miscommunication between me and some of the other handlers, and it led to me being ran over by a fighter aircraft.
And you lost your leg?
Not right away, but eventually through many surgeries and various infections.
I'm here to tell them how much I appreciate what they've done for us. I spent two years in the Army. I was proud to represent the United States of America. And I'm sure each and every one of those veterans here are proud to be representing our country.
Al Downing, ex Yankee, ex Dodger, ex major leaguer, was on hand with some great advice for the vets.
Relax, because no matter what you're doing in the field of sports or life or any, take and test anything, you have to relax in order to be able to execute properly.
About 300 vets and their families are here for the big event, but often it's the kids who are the most excited.
I'm really excited to go up and hit.
Are you good? Do you like baseball?
Yes, I do. I've been playing it ever since 2009.
And you've got your own mitt?
Yes.
And boy, this kid had a swing.
My daughter, she loves baseball. She's been playing T-ball ever since coming up, so she always begging me, "Dad, take me to the game, take me to the game."
So it's important enough to skip school for her?
Yes, yes, I give her that day off, yes.
I like it, out of 10, I like it 10.
The pitching, the batting, the fielding, the picture-taking, and the autographs. A day full of R and R for a group of patriots who don't often see much of it in their line of work.
Relax.
I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Other Dodger alumni at the event included Bill Ashley and Roy Gleason. While Spanish-language media is teaming with elected leaders for the largest local citizenship drive of its kind, as Gil Reyes reports, the goal is to naturalize nearly a million eligible residents throughout LA County.
Nicaraguan citizen Thelma Cuevas is finally taking the plunge. After nearly 30 years living in the United States, she and her husband are finally filing papers to become American citizens.
There is no more important issue than to get the immigrant community to be part of our community and part of our society.
At Naleo Headquarters in downtown, immigrant rights groups announced the biggest citizenship drive of its kind in LA County history: the plan to naturalize 755,000 green card holders. These are permanent U.S. residents who've been in the country for five years or more, who can now take steps to become U.S. citizens.
For every single new citizen, we see $1.17 more added to the economy. For all of us, so our wages, those of us who are already citizens, go up when more people become citizens. We know what it means for voter turnout. We know what it means for your rights. You can actually run for things like mayor when you become a citizen.
LA Mayor Eric Garcetti says the city, county, and Spanish-language media are teaming up for an advertising blitz to get the word out that the process is safe. The call center at Naleo has bilingual operators standing by to guide you through the citizenship process. Asian Pacific Islanders, Europeans, and other green card holders in LA County are also invited to dive right into the great American melting pot. But it all starts with a phone call, as you can see, operators here at Naleo Headquarters waiting for your call Monday through Friday. Simply call the number at the bottom of your screen, 1-888-839-8682. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
LaPigón, Telemundo 52, and Univision 34 are just some of the local media outlets getting the word out. While Mayor Eric Garcetti honors student veterans, Wells Fargo helps those veterans get the services they need, and community members celebrate improvements of a hidden treasure near USC. All these stories and more in City View. For the second year in a row, Ninth District Councilman Current Price recently held a staff appreciation luncheon at his district office on Central Avenue honoring city employees and departments. Price said that he wanted to show his appreciation for all of his staff's hard work.
Each of these persons here has some role to play with improving the quality of life for us here in District Nine. We just want to say thank you.
A student-veteran ceremony hosted by the Veterans Resource Center was held recently at LA Mission College in Silmar. Mayor Eric Garcetti spoke at the event, which honored veterans. The theme was helping them achieve their educational goals. The mayor, who is a Navy veteran, said that jobs, education, and housing for veterans are top priorities, adding that since last January, the city has found housing for more than 4,000 homeless vets.
My promise to you as mayor, I won't just say, "Thanks for your service," but if you need help with a job, with education, with finding housing, we are here to make sure that happens.
Mayor Garcetti also joined Wells Fargo recently to present a $50,000 grant to New Directions for Veterans, which provides homeless veterans with transitional housing services, along with mental health and substance abuse treatment, job training and placement, legal assistance, and financial education.
Together, I believe that we can restore hope for those who have protected our freedom, and today that is what we celebrate.
And it's amazing the support our veterans are seeing today, especially from the mayor's office, putting that as a top priority.
Royal Heights community members and city officials recently came out for ribbon-cutting and celebration of upgrades at Ramona Gardens and Hazard Park, including a new jogging path and outdoor exercise equipment. The upgrades are part of $1 million in park improvements negotiated by Councilmember Jose Huizar with the University of Southern California. The basketball and tennis courts were also upgraded, and a new toddler playground was installed.
We're glad for this little path they made, this bridge they made, the sidewalk that we could be able to walk around and exercise.
This park has had a lot of history, and a lot of people care about it.
A little holiday cheer in LA's East Side, as Councilmember Gil Sadio passes out turkeys to the community. Anna Marcos brings us more from the Lincoln Heights Senior Center.
An orderly chaos as hundreds of Lincoln Heights residents line up for their free turkey. A holiday gift from Councilmember Gil Sadio. This is the annual turkey drive at the Lincoln Heights Senior Center.
I cannot tell you how much I love coming here. This is my favorite event each year.
What else are you gonna make with it?
Pecosole and tamales.
Pecosole, tamales, and turkey?
Yeah.
We want to spend with my daughter who lives in Rachel, Cucamonga.
This is obviously a working-class community of modest means, but of giant hearts and great appreciation.
Gina Eskamia and her baby Luna join the crowds in hopes of getting one of the holiday birds.
It'd be nice to have a turkey. I was thinking of getting a chicken, but it'd be nice to get a turkey. You know, for her, she loves, you know, her first Thanksgiving too, so you want to make it special.
A total of 500 turkeys will help make these people's holiday this year, but if you just turn up hoping to get one, you're out of luck. You had to be pre-registered. Eskamia and others who didn't register have to wait and hope that there are extra turkeys left.
Maybe in three, in thirty minutes or one hour, we had to wait.
So you might not get turkey.
Even if I do or don't get turkey, I'm still gonna try my best to have a good Thanksgiving dinner.
Luckily, some people never show up to claim their registered turkeys, which means most of those here, from sleepy babies to hopeful grannies, will get their holiday bird after all. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Well, it's a sports competition that's been around for 31 years, with some players well into their 90s. Rich Samuels reports on lawn bowling.
Lawn bowling has roots that go back to 13th-century England, and it's still a popular sport at Holby Park in West LA.
Anybody can join, any age. Majority of the people are a little older because it's a sport that's social, outdoors, and low-impact.
The object of the game is for your team, if your bowling team, to get your bowls closest to the jack. The jack is the target bowl.
The Department of Recreation and Parks served as host recently for the Jocelyn Mixed Triples Tournament at Holby Park, one of many competitions held internationally.
It's just a lovely, lovely sport. Nice, nice people and very, very friendly, and the nice thing about it is that you can go all year round.
With 17 clubs across the Southland, it seems that lawn bowling is destined to be around for another 700 years. From Holby Park in West Los Angeles, this is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
The competition is named after Marcellus Jocelyn, founder of the Jocelyn Foundation, a benefactor of many senior organizations, including lawn bowling clubs. While decorated sailboats and ships light up the LA waterfront, a unique market puts the spotlight on local artists, and grab your skates for a magical time on ice. All this and this week's Things to Do. Los Angeles Harbor sparkles with holiday lights during the free and festive 53rd Annual Holiday Afloat Parade. Officials and community leaders will take part in the parade as judges or passengers on approximately 60 boats parading along the LA waterfront. Participating vessels are of all shapes and sizes, including powerboats, sailboats, tall ships, and harbor-working craft. There are several viewing locations affording spectators unencumbered views of the elaborately decorated boats and the opportunity for friends and family to join in the celebration, whether taking advantage of the many restaurants and clubs at Port So Cal or organizing an informal potluck. Check it out on Saturday, December 5th at 6:00 PM at the Port of Los Angeles. For more, visit portoflos angeles.org. Described as the largest "Made in America" shopping event in the country, the 8th Annual Unique USA Holiday Market features clothes, accessories, and art pieces from a number of quality handmade brands. Check out local products and rub elbows with the different designers and artists showcasing their work. Take a break with locally-made food, plus free drinks, snacks, and photo booth portraits. Free gift wrapping for the holiday season is also available, along with free DIY craft projects all weekend long. The market takes place on Saturday, December 5th, and Sunday, December 6th, at the California Market Center, located at 110 East Ninth Street in downtown. For more, visit uniqueusa.com. The annual LA Kings Holiday Ice brings outdoor ice skating to LA Live's Microsoft Square. Skate around the dazzling Christmas tree that stands in the middle of this outdoor rink and take in an LED holiday light show on the huge screens around the plaza. For the perfect date night, book the supper and skating deal, which includes a prefix dinner at a handful of LA Live restaurants. The ice rink is open through December 31st and located at 800 West Olympic Boulevard. For more info, visit lalive.com/events. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. If everyone could please take their seats. It is Wednesday, December 2nd. Want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. In fact, let me check to make sure that's Mr. Buscaino. Yes, it is. He's just bearded, but that is Mr. Buscaino. So we do have a quorum. Could you call the roll so we could start our work for today?
Very good, sir. Blumenfeld, Bono, Buscaino, Sadio, Edgar Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carr, Ets, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Rue moves and Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves and Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are recommendations from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file Item 1E in as much as the lien has been paid, and to continue Items 1B to December 16 and 1G to January 13. Further, there is a request from member to refer Item 17 back to the Arts, Parks, and River Committee.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order? That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 1 through 11. They're items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on all items except for 2, 7, and 10.
Okay, let's hold the items that we have cards on and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Let's move on to the next section.
Very good, sir. And, Mr. President, those ordinances for Items 2 and 7 will be held over unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Okay, we should get to 12. And as soon as we are at that number, remind me, and we'll do reconsideration and whatever else is necessary to move those items. So where are we now?
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 12 through 20. They're items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, specials, 12 through 20. Okay, I'm informed to hold 13. So I'll hold that. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council back to items called special or presentations.
Ms. Martinez? If you would please take the president's chair?
Mr. Buscaino, good morning. Joined by President Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, help me welcome Anita de France to the Los Angeles John Farrow City Council chambers, celebrating her years of service to this great city of Los Angeles. Of course, also joined by our council president, Wesson, and the Honorable Yvonne Brathwaite Burke. Please join us, and also Maureen, please join us as well. Anita de France has been one of the more influential women, not only in sports, but in Los Angeles' civic and philanthropic community over the past three decades from her post as president of the L.A. 84 Foundation. The L.A. 84 Foundation represents the legacy of the 1984 Los Angeles Olympic Games. By agreement with the International Olympic Committee and the L.A. Organizing Committee, 40% of any surplus from the '84 Games went back into the community to serve its youth through sports. The highly successful 1984 L.A. Olympics generated $93 million in endowment for the foundation. That's $93 million now, today, $160 million, and that's after more than $225 million has been distributed to over 2,000 youth sport organizations across Los Angeles and the Southern California region. Anita de France was the captain of the United States Women's eight-person rowing team that won a bronze medal in 1976 in Montreal. She was a member of the 1980 U.S. Olympic team that was deprived of competing in Moscow after the U.S. boycott. During the 1984 Games, she ran the Athletes Village at USC, and in 1986, she was elected to the International Olympic Committee, where she later became the first female vice president of its executive committee. Anita currently serves on both the U.S. Olympic Committee and the IOC. So colleagues, as you know, in a time when we're bidding for the Games for 2024, we know, Mr. President, we have a friend looking out for us.
Yes, we do.
Anita will be one of the members voting on this election of the 2024 Olympic Host City Games, when it will be announced in Peru, a little over 22 months from now, in September of 2017. She'll, well, she'll be looking for new horizons. Anita is by no means retiring. I just had a sidebar conversation with her. I believe she's going to be more busy than ever once she retires. We appreciate you, Anita. We appreciate, love you, and thank you for all that you've done for our wonderfully diverse city as head of the L.A. 84 Foundation. Our council president, Wesson, and this full council have invited you here this morning to recognize you for the immense positive legacy that you've left here in Los Angeles. Before I invite Anita and other speakers here, help me welcome our council president, Herb Wesson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. I think that you did a very good job where it relates to all of the facts and many of the phenomenal things that Anita has done. But I'd like to just take a moment to make sure that the people in this chambers recognize Supervisor Yvonne Burke and the former, yeah, give her... And the former Chair of Public Works, Maureen Kendall. Give Maureen a round of applause. They are two women that have been instrumental in my life, in my development as a public servant, and without their support and mentorship over the years, I would not be standing before you on this day. Anita de France is a treasure. She is L.A.'s treasure. She is one of the most fascinating people that you would ever have a conversation with. And I wanted to be part of this presentation so I could make it a little personal. I've had the pleasure to know her since, I want to say, 1988 or 1987. Whenever there's something for children, like a Dodgers Dream Field or something like that throughout the city, at least in my district, Anita is always there. She has represented Los Angeles, and women in particular, with such class, and she is respected throughout not just this city, or this state, or this country, but she is respected throughout the world. If you are ever afforded the opportunity to sit down and have a conversation with her and ask her how she began, and to walk you through her years as an athlete and as a member of the Olympic Committee, it is mesmerizing. And in my view, that this, the Olympic Foundation that we have today that is highly respected would not be half of the foundation that it is if it were not for Anita sitting at the big table, helping to make the very important decisions. Now, Joe also touched on the fact that she is a voting member, where it relates to the selection of the 2024 Games. But she's more than that for Los Angeles. She's one of our most valuable resources as we plan our strategy to win this selection. Who better to have at our side than an Olympic athlete and an individual that has lived the Olympic world, in the Olympic world, for so many years? So, members, I will say to you and Mr. Sadio, who is the vice chair of the City Council's Committee that will try to bring the Games to Los Angeles, that this council and this committee will make sure that we use all of the skills that Anita de France brings to the fore, and we will make the same request of our mayor. She is a treasure, and it would be unintelligent of us not to take advantage of this skillful treasure that I have. So, in closing, I do want to again thank Mr. Buscaino. This is the least that we can do for a woman who spent several years in this city, helping youth sports from the Valley to San Pedro. Always there, all kinds of requests, somehow getting it done. You cannot replace Anita de France, but we will do our best to get by. I'm going to ask you for one real, and I mean it, real, genuine, sincere applause to a great treasure of the city of Los Angeles, Anita de France. Give her the recognition that she deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Help me welcome the Honorable Yvonne Burke to say a few words about Anita.
My boss. And David's boss.
Well, Mr. Council President, to the members, I have had a great opportunity to work with not only a great athlete, but a person who has been able to bring together a foundation to make it successful. Now, is it successful? If you start off with $91 million and end up 20 years later with $167 million and serve 200 million people and provide services to young people throughout this state? Because let me say, it's not just Los Angeles. L.A. 84 helps people in all of the areas where there were events during the 1984 Olympics, and sometimes some other areas that are in tremendous need. So it has made a mark. It's changed so many young lives, and the reason it was successful is because we had someone there who knew what to do and did it effectively. Anita, we can never express our full gratitude for 28 years of success, and not always comfortable, not always pleasant, but you really stood up, and you did a marvelous job. Congratulations.
Yes. And help me welcome Maureen Kendall to say a few words. Maureen, of course, first woman appointed to the Board of Public Works, as indicated by Council President Wesson.
The Chair.
The Chair, that's right. She also served as Secretary of the 1984 Olympic Foundation, and of course, is the founder of Kendall Gig, and one of the leading public advocacy firms in Los Angeles. Help me welcome Maureen Kendall.
Thank you, everybody, and good morning. I'm so pleased and proud to be here, but I can't help but think that Tom Bradley is doing a gig in heaven and smiling down on all of us today. I am here to bear witness to the fact that Tom selected her all those many years ago, and she stood up and helped in every way she can. Thank you very much.
And members on the queue, Madam President? Okay, fantastic. Help me welcome, like Herb said, city of Los Angeles treasure, to say a few words, Anita de France.
Thank you, President of the Council, councilmen and women, for this remarkable honor. I stand here with two of my bosses from the L.A. Olympic Organizing Committee. They're on the executive board of that organization and made the Games work with the leadership of Peter Uworo and Harry Usher. And in fact, Peter invited me to work here after 1980. I was on the board, but I thought he just wanted to be nice to an athlete who had been disappointed, but he was serious, and so I came. And it took me 10 minutes to know that this would be my home forever. This is a city that opens its arms to anyone that's willing to accept what people have to offer, and it is the perfect place to host the Olympic Games. It's a city looking to the future. It's a city that, as I say, accepts all, accepts all, and there are so many Olympians who live here already. Why not? It would be very easy for them to just use the facilities, the wonderful facilities that this city has. I believe that sports is a birthright, and everyone should have access to it. It's something that we do as humans, no other species does, and over these 28 years, I've had the opportunity to make that available to kids, that which I did not have as a child. It wasn't until I arrived at college that I had sports opportunities. But I had a team with me, and the team is sitting over here, two of whom have survived all 28 years with me, which is miraculous. Where is Patrick? Oh, they're over there. He's working. He disappeared. And Wayne, and all the rest of the folks here who made it happen. So it's your city. The foundation belongs to this city, has the legacy of the 1984 Olympic Games, and it will continue to serve this city as that. I intend to be here for the long haul. This is the city of angels, and it welcomed me. I knew one person when I moved here. I now know hundreds and maybe even thousands of people in this wonderful city. I intend to continue to serve it as you do. Thank you very much for this tremendous honor. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, this council, Mayor Garcetti, we honor you, Anita, for your dedicated service to the city and the youth of the state of California, not only the city of Los Angeles. So God bless you. Thank you. We're so thankful for all that you've done for us.
You have to be an Olympian to carry this damn thing.
We have a thing in Rowan. If you can't lift it, you can't row it.
Well, we go there.
Do you want to go in the front?
Yeah, or we go in the back. Let's take this glare.
I'm tall enough.
All right, let's go.
Give her another round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Go in the back, yes. You got that, Herb?
It was bigger than you.
You got your long legs with you?
Oh, not yet. We're going to reconsider the ordinance.
Madam President, at this time, would you like to reconsider Items 2 and 7? Those were the ordinances that passed with 11 members.
Yes, there's now 12 members here. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll.
And for clarification, the first vote is on reconsideration.
Correct. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those matters, or those items are now before you.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, let's move on to Item 3.
Item 3 called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, Item 3, sir. Is John Walsh here? There he is.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Always a pleasure to speak before you. This concerns the maintenance of the Wilshire Boulevard and Malcolm Avenue Street Lighting District. Again, I say that the street lighting has improved immensely since 1976, when I moved into my current address, and although the street lighting district charges too much to the landlord, who passes it on to us, here it says levying assessments, even though it is expensive, when you do a good job, I'm the first to congratulate you. When you do a crappy job, I'm the first to condemn you. HollywoodHighlands.org, one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That concludes cards on this item. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to Item 4. Mr. Walsh, Item 4, sir.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 4 is another improvement and maintenance. Inside, I don't see any improvements. I see good maintenance, but no improvements, of the Carmelia and Landale Street Lighting District, and I don't see anybody up here protesting it, so if I don't see anybody up here protesting the street lighting district, I tend to believe that they're doing as good a job here as they are in my neighborhood, which is near Capitol Records Tower. HollywoodHighlands.org, thank you.
Mr. Walsh, don't go too far away, because Item 5 is next, and you've also filled out a card for that. But let's open the roll on Item 4, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to Item 5. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. It's a skimpy agenda today, as you can tell. This is another Wilshire Boulevard, street lighting, incidentally, which we have no objection to, but if you have poor street lighting, just email me, and I'll be the first to bring it up here. So far, I haven't received any emails at this area about protests. This is a confirmation of the assessments. The assessments are a politically correct term for the tax. However, I'm sure that even renters who get this assessment passed on to them every year in a rent hike, so we're paying for this too, although the landlord pays for it first, I don't see anybody complaining, so this is okay by us. Thank you, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler. Followed by Michael Hunt.
Yes, lighting in one of the most dangerous areas of the city, Valencia Avenue. Every cop knows, don't walk around there in the dark, so now there will be lights, lights for the children, lights to stop the drug dealing, lights to stop all of the crime activities. That's why they need lights, and nobody knows better about lights than myself, because I know when I walk down a street and it's not lit, I don't go down that street unless it's in the various limited areas where there are Jewish homeowners. But in this case, I Googled it, and I think it has to be determined as a notice of findings that Wilshire Boulevard and Valencia has no rich Jewish owners. So therefore, in this case, I have to support this in the name of public safety.
Next speaker, Michael Hunt.
The Red Chief Hunt for the record, folks.
The Red Chief Hunt for the record, folks. The bottom line about lighting up your community, like you said, in a rural neighborhood, well, Wilshire and Valencia needs a lot of lights. Not only Christmas lights, but a lot of lighting for the activity that goes along there. So on this ordinance, it doesn't stand any constitutional challenge, so I'm going to vote yes on the lights, and I want all you guys to vote yes on the lights, too. So go ahead and pass this through. Thank you. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. That concludes cards on item five. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to item six. Antonia Ramirez, item six. Good morning, Ms. Ramirez.
Good morning, President. Thank you very much. Wilshire Boulevard, like Ventura Boulevard, used to be the posh, elegant, fascinating, and creative storefronts, vibrant businesses. And sad to say, that is no longer true. Wilshire has become dilapidated because of the horrid disrepair all through the streets and the lightings. As you walk the streets, as you walk all Wilshire Boulevard, you will see that there are many light posts, where the light post towards the bottom has a cap or a cover, and that cap or cover is removed. And you can see now most of the wires and the cables exposed from these light posts. This is now, this is practically everywhere, all over Wilshire Boulevard, Ventura, and all throughout the city. I've reported this to the LAPD, and again, this is gang bangers, wetbacks and gang bangers doing. Again, these cables and wires from these light posts are exposed. Many of them, I don't know if this is deliberately done in collusion with the gangs and the wetbacks to disarm the city one day, I don't know. But it is scary to see that now most of these light posts everywhere have a cover removed. The cables, the wiring, all is exposed. That was never seen before. And now with some of the, I guess your department, is covering it with tape. That's not good enough. Repair those light post covers and seal it proof. I don't know if you put crazy glue, but seal those caps and make sure that those wires and cables are not exposed. I'm afraid that these gangs have something, some kind of an agenda, and then they may cut all the wires and shut the entire city. So please, let's take care of that. That is important. That is in Little Tokyo, Los Angeles, downtown Spring Street, Grand Street, as well as Wilshire and Ventura and VNI's. Please, let's take care of this dilemma. It is a threat. And again, let's vote for Donald Trump to repair the entire country. God bless America and our military.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Wayne Spindler on item six.
Somebody's out of their chair. So we have, again, CD one, Google the area. This time, it's Wilshire Boulevard and Coronado Street, which people today in the politically correct city call it Coronado Street. Now, you go down Wilshire Boulevard and Coronado, and you see a lot of these street vendors. These are small businesses. They're not Jews. They're just poor Latino people trying to sell their goods and services to make a little money. So Wilshire Boulevard and Coronado needs lighting. They need the lighting because they got to keep themselves safe from the muggers, and also from the police on the take, because sometimes they drive up and they try to take additional payoffs. So vote yes for lighting on item six.
That concludes cards on item six. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item eight.
Item eight called Special for Cards.
Wayne Spindler, item eight. Followed by Eric Previn. Start his time, please, Madam Clerk.
Now, we get to CD four. Well, this is for future street easements and the portion of Fairfax Avenue and San Vicente. Now, before, this council district was ruled by an evil tyrant dictator. But now, this council district has now changed hands. Transparency now rules the land in CD four. At last, you can spend $14,980 for a real investigation, whether this requires this. Now, this is not a payoff anymore, because David Rue's in charge. $14,980 for a legitimate investigation and a legitimate easement. So if David Rue is for it, then goddamn it, I'm for it. Vote yes.
Mr. Previn, item eight, sir.
Thank you, Council President Martinez. Item eight is the, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a vacation, correct? The vacation of the property?
Yeah.
In CD four. So I looked closely, but I was not able to see in this agenda who specifically the petitioner is. And, you know, I noticed that there are several items exactly like this, where, once again, we do not really identify the petitioner. I mean, I think that this information certainly exists if you click through into the web of backup documentation somewhere, but I was not able to locate it on the document. And what they're doing is they're coming up with some money. $14,980 is the small number. I think another one is a bit larger. And then what that does is gets the permitting rolling to provide the property to the party. And the party here, of course, is anonymous, but we know they do exist, and if anybody is curious enough to dig into the file, they could see who it is. But I've asked, and I would ask you, to make a systemic note, because we do it for other items, like cultural historic designations and others, where we, and some of the ones where we're shaming folks. Mr. Buzcaeno, as you know, will put the name of the individual or their LLC. So I think that when we're giving something nice to someone, we should also disclose it in connection with transparency. And of course, today, we all should be very proud, because at the lead of the L.A. Times story, Jessica Levinson of our Ethics Commission got the lead quote about transparency. So that's exciting for all of us here at City Hall. And I'm looking forward to Ms. Levinson doing her very best as the president of the Ethics Commission. But for this little trifle of a matter, let's just call out who specifically is getting the nice easements on the front of the agenda, then we can say, hey, wait a minute, or fantastic, finally, the school is getting something for all of their struggles. So thank you, Councilmember Martinez, and let's try to make this a nice meeting where we're all being civil. Thank you.
We will try, Mr. Previn. Thank you very much. That concludes cards on item eight. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to item nine.
Item nine called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, item nine, sir.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. org, J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is probably the most useless thing at City Hall, the Gang Reduction Committee. These are all these gangsters who got caught, and then were offered a job rather than going to prison. That's all they are. This is a vacation of a two-foot-wide variable sidewalk easement. Two foot wide, so that the gangs can get in and out better. Remember, I taught for 25 years in that neighborhood. The gangs all know me. They had me as a substitute, as first, second, third, fourth grade teacher. They called me the teacher. That's my gang nickname. I didn't give it to me. I'm telling you right now that this easement is a joke, two feet wide. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That concludes cards on item nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Next item, item 11, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, that brings us to item 11. It's called Special for Cards.
Sean? Item 11, are you here, Sean? Good morning, Sean.
Yeah, good morning. It was good seeing Yvonne Bradway Burke. We had our differences, but it's over. Item 11, I'm against.
Thank you, Sean. The next speaker is Eric Previn on item 11.
Yes, it's Eric Previn, and I'm just going to take 30 seconds on this one. I'd like to thank Mr. Buzcaeno. This is a, I believe it's port-related easement or vacation of some kind, and that's very interesting to me. One note would be that Terminal Island is a fantastic sort of asset off of the code between Long Beach and San... It may be worth looking at. There's some folks who have been looking at how to roll something into that space. I just thought I'd bring that up, because he's so focused on rehabilitating and bringing forward the good things in the port. So thank you.
That concludes cards on item 11. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
Madam President, I would like to make a quick introduction, if it's okay with you. We have a delegation in from the city of Caborcas, Sonora, Mexico. Joining us today is their mayor, Presidente Municipal, o'Alcalde, si, verdad? Karina Garcia-Gutierrez. Give her a big round of applause. Also with them is their Director of Public Works, Alejandro Hurtado. The Director of Social Engagement, Ruben Dario Salcido. Director of Communications, Cristobal Garcia-Bernal. Also, the Coordinator of Culture, Marcel Perez-Rascón. And of course, the Chief of Staff to the Presidente Municipal, Fabiola Palacios. Very good. Give them a big round of applause. They are here today to learn more about our environmental programs and initiatives, as well as to share mutual areas of concern, and they're working very closely with our beloved Enrique Saldivar. Give them a big round of applause. Thank you.
Bienvenidos. On to item number one, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, for item one, there's been a request to continue 1H to December 16.
Without objection, 1H will be continued. Say the date again.
December 16.
December 16th, very well.
And Madam President, I'm sorry, but for item 11, we should vote on that matter.
I'm so sorry. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
So we're going to continue item 1H for two weeks. Any other items?
No, ma'am.
Okay, let's take up cards, Mr. Walsh, on item one.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Again, here's where the building and safety does a good job. If your landlord does not repair the code violations, that's considered by the city a nuisance, and then this nuisance abatement costs kick in. Now, sometimes it's not justified, and sometimes it is justified. If you come to us, we'll tell you, but in any case, if you show up here and you complain about the lien, you're told to come back in two weeks. They never come back in two weeks. You do you want to come back and say, I was here two weeks ago? No, because the lien is either gotten rid of, or it's cut in half, which for some of these landlords is good.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler on item one. Followed by Eric Previn and Michael Hunt.
Yes, to all those items that were deferred, thank you. Congratulations. You, all you need to do is show up on these items, and you will get a minimum 50% reduction on these liens. Simply come down here and bitch whenever you get these liens, because it's worth it. They're all illegal. None of these liens are compliant with federal and state law. They're all fraudulently done. And if all these people were smart, they would have paid off the building inspector, but they didn't. So they have to have these liens. Remember, pay off the building inspector whenever possible. Now, you look at the liens in CD six, item K, and item C, since Nury, that's the district in Nury. Nury can waive those as chair without any objection. None heard, they're waived. Thank you. Now, we get to CD one, and that is the absentee CD of Gilbert Sedillo, that never shows up anymore. And these are very poor people. $932.40 to a Jew is not a lot of money, but to a poor Latino, it is a lot of money, and I object to item J. It is excessive. It must be waived. Now, we get to CD two, 7306 North Arm Dale Avenue, and that is in CD two, that used to be an old farm community in CD two. They used to raise goats, and that's over by Paul Corian's district. So I would urge that that be waived for $3,288.09. Finally, CD 11, the poor area of South Oceanfront Walk. Very, very poor area, beachfront, very poor. Please, for the poor people, waive it on item F.
Next speaker, Mr. Previn, followed by Michael Hunt and Patricia McAllister.
Hola y mucho gusto a los gente de Mexico. Esta item es una, donde la ciudad de Los Angeles arriba en su casa y después fija una pena, una pena con muchos dolores de la hombre o mama que vive en ese casa. Now, la problema es que la gente viene a este reunión un semana, después una otra semana, después una otra semana, y nada, nada bien, nada bien. Simplemente mucho dinero, en fa, de este gente. Es muy, muy brutal, es muy, muy feo por esta ciudad. Y yo espero, yo trato mucho tiempo a hablar con mi jefes aquí, a cambiar este modas operandas, porque es muy, es muy, es muy malo, en fa. And I trato a hablar con los items entre the governing body, pero hay mucho difícil con este también, porque todos los items de entrasada, la gente en un union en un otro cuarto, en un otro tiempo. So vivo Mexico, pero also vivo Los Angeles. Gracias.
Mr. Hunt, you're next, sir, on item one.
Yes, yes. The Red Chief Hunt on the record. Boy, the city attorney's not bilingual on this, huh? Yeah, that's a good laugh. Anyways, right now, for any type of liens during the Christmas holidays, avoid to next month. Vote no on this, or hold it over till next month, because it'll be after Christmas time. Give them a chance to recoup during tax time and pay their liens off. The Red Chief Hunt has now spoke, and if you guys can please obey that, you know, and get it done. Wait till after the new year, give them a chance to get their money in order to pay the liens. Thank you, the Red Chief Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Next speaker, Patricia McAllister, on item one, ma'am.
Yes, I have a problem with this council and Mayor Garcetti. When we have millions of people laying on the street around this country, and especially here in Los Angeles, you walk three blocks, and it looks like it is Black Skid Row, and every day, you have a listing of people that you're trying to throw on the street. What kind of government is this? This is insane. This is...
Ma'am, you're not on, you're not on topic. No, you're not. These are on liens. It's item one. You need to stick to the item, or you're going to ask to be... Sit down, ma'am.
Did you hear that, you wetback?
Thank you, ma'am. We are going to take up the vote on item one. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk? Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's go on to public comment. Sean Murphy.
What item?
Public comment, sir.
Oh, the general... That Hollywood Christmas parade I attended, I attended that parade for 24 years. I never had to wait an hour and a half for the parade to begin. I hope you change that.
Mr. Walsh, followed by Byron Barajas and Wayne Spindler.
John Walsh, I have the Wall Street Journal of today. Los Angeles Mayor Garcetti lists his home. He's listed his home. Incidentally, he's going to have to evict his tenants who are in this Silver Lake home, so he's evicting tenants. This is in the Wall Street Journal because he cock-teases David Zandheiser to keep it out of the L.A. Times. Okay, he wants, he bought it in 2000. He wants 1.65 million. He paid $345,000 for it, and he sold his previous, he had two homes, he sold 1.9. So, he really owns no home now, and I want you to realize that he has his adopted daughter in, at this, being thrown out of this home, but what we want is not, do not sell the home, open it as a homeless shelter. Do the politically correct thing. You're worth hundreds of millions of dollars, you piece of shit.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker is Byron Barajas, followed by Wayne Spindler.
So, on LaRouche Pact, there's one of our titles is Learn the Lessons of Brunelleschi. I think a renaissance is in order. I don't believe that we have to die necessarily by our ignorance. I think that one of the intentions of a renaissance is something like China's doing with its New Silk Road. Trillions of dollars will be pumped in the Middle East, particularly in a region where it's terrorist-prone, like Syria. And the reason I bring this up is because that's the only direction that we can get out of this dark age. Many people don't understand that. They live to live within a fantasy world, and I cannot tolerate anybody who does that. This country is in trouble. Humanity is in trouble, and we need to fix it.
Mr. Spindler.
So, yesterday, the grand theft at the DWP occurred. $265 million of ratepayer money was stolen yesterday by a four-to-nothing vote by the criminals at the L.A. DWP. Today, at the committee meeting on animal and personnel, which I talked about dogs, I was interrupted because I want to know what the city council's going to do with this $265 million gift. Even though it's stolen money, at least give $100 million of it to the homeless. You have the $100 million, you still would be left with $165 million. So, you got the $100 million for the homeless. So, you're going to have the money very soon. Yesterday, they started putting the money in various bags, trash bags, recyclable bags. So, they're putting the cash in these recyclable bags. They will be delivering it to Herb Weston Jr. tomorrow. The $265 billion will be here tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, let's now move to item 13. I'm going to recognize Mr. Englander.
Great, thank you very much, and I'd like to ask the police department to come up to the table as well. Colleagues, as they're coming up, let me tell you what item 13 is very, very quickly and get through this.
Mr. Previn, sit down, please.
We've already had public comment on this.
We're, just please, sit down.
You're disrupting the meeting, sir.
No, he's disrupting the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Englander.
Thank you. There are essentially three technical, if you will, amendments. Two that are more technical, and one that I'm going to speak a little bit about. On this, first, let me start off by saying, we have already and will continue to have the toughest legislation, the toughest gun safety laws in the United States of any city in the country. And I want to applaud Councilmember Corian and many of you who have led the effort to that end. And you all know my private story that I'm not going to get into right now of why I support gun safety and having gun locks and having all weapons secured by everybody, including law enforcement. The first is, we've got item 1, 14, and 15. 1 and 14 are truly technical amendments, whereas instead of having, the language we had now is for use in accordance with the law enforcement policy of the agency. That's ironclad. There's no question that we already have those policies in place. Some have brought up perhaps the discussion of qualified retired police officers and whether they should be able to carry a firearm once they're retired. Well, we already have that law in the United States. In fact, it's called LEOSA, which is the Law Enforcement Officers Safety Act, approved by President Bush and recertified and expanded by President Barack Obama. The Law Enforcement Officers Safety Act in the United States, federal law enacted in 2004, allows two classes of persons, they already identified classification, two classes of persons, qualified law enforcement officer and a qualified retired law enforcement officer to carry concealed firearm in any jurisdiction in the United States regardless of state or local laws. We have no authority to take that away. We're not here to do that today, and that has never been up for discussion. And so, you can and shall carry as retired officer in good standing and qualified. It's very specific in what it means, and I've got the definition of that if anybody has any questions. You can carry everywhere in the United States. And that is that the bill exempts qualified active and retired law enforcement officers, again, in any jurisdiction. And why is that important? Well, I'll give you a couple stories. Retired Burbank, California, police officer Dennis Fisher was standing in line in Los Angeles, in fact, in Sunland, at McDonald's, when parolee Ryan Williams Reese, who robbed his, whose robbery modus operandi was to strike fear into the hearts of witnesses by pistol-whipping victims, sprung into action directly in front of the retired officer. Fisher initially tried to subdue Reese, but after becoming injured during the struggle, the retired officer drew his weapon, shot the armed suspect. The suspect was pronounced at the scene. Retired Officer Fisher was credited with saving the lives of two dozen people present during the robbery. Just a couple weeks ago, a retired Jacksonville police officer was in the drive-through of Florida Bank when he saw an armed robbery happening, springing into action. A man believed to have been held up a bank in Fruit Grove Shopping Center just before noon on Monday was shot by a retired police officer, according to the St. Johns County Sheriff's Department. Sheriff David Shore said the suspect pushing a note demanding money to the teller then left the bank with an undisclosed amount of cash. Police said retired Officer Kellum was waiting in the drive-through teller window when he saw the suspect running from the bank after the robbery. He chased the suspect in a residential neighborhood behind the bank and confronted him. The two briefly fought, and the altercation ended when, according to several witnesses, the suspect tried to pull a handgun from his waistband. Retired officer drew his handgun and fired several times, hitting the suspect. Deputies said they found large amounts of cash on the suspect, along with a note and handguns. The retired officer, Mr. Kellum's instincts and tolerable shooting, shooting the suspect is now in the hospital and facing several felony charges. The sheriff said, "We no longer will have the suspect as a threat to our citizens." Retired Officers: Robbery in North Miami Cafe Stopped Suspect. Retired Officers Protect Customers From Armed Robbers in the Southwest Miami Dade, 2015. I've got literally dozens of these stories. Not one, by the way, of a retired officer doing anything outside of policy. I don't know how many of you actually watched The 60 Minutes just a couple weeks ago with Anderson Cooper on November 22 responding to an active shooter, and this is really the game changer. For those of you who didn't, it focused on how the U.S. police departments are training their officers and members of the public and how to respond and stay alive in an active shooter attack. According to our former chief, New York Commissioner Bill Bratton, on what he learned from Mumbai, the stakes are high. Quote, "We've learned that these people are going to take hostages only for the purpose of media attention. They're going to kill them. They're not interested in negotiating to surrender. They're negotiating just to extend the span of time that the media is going to cover what they're doing." So, that's very significant. It's a very significant change to what normally and what we're used to, and to try and rescue the hostages through negotiation. Time is the utmost importance. And it goes on and on, and talking about these issues, in fact, saying that, according to the FBI, 60% of active shooter attacks are over before the police arrive. So, now, law enforcement agencies throughout the country are trying to educate the public on how to survive on their own. Goes on and talks about the idea of having retired officers as a force multiplier. With that, I'd like to ask our chief to come up and present the department's perspective and opinion on this, what I will consider, again, technical correction.
Chief, welcome.
Mr. President, members of the city council, good morning. Kirk Albanese, Chief of Detectives, here representing Chief Charlie Beck. The department supports both amendments for reasons that Councilmember Englander articulated, but I'll go beyond that and simplify it and say this. We are at a time where our ability to contain a location and negotiate may not always be at hand. We may have to go in in order to save lives. We've seen recent incidents throughout the country and throughout the world that speak to that. Our objective is to get to an emergency call in seven minutes or less. We strive for that all the time, but as all of us in this room know, seven minutes can be a long time. Two or three minutes can be an eternity. We know that as well. And so, having retired police officers who are trained, many cases for 30 years or more, to be able to provide for public safety, to save lives, is something that the police department is absolutely in favor of for obvious reasons. Those first responders may get there too late, and a retired police officer may provide for that public safety to keep people alive. And so, absolutely in support of that. The other thing that should be mentioned is, this does not just impact the LAPD. This high-capacity magazine issue would impact all local, state, and federal officers who are retired, many of whom live in our city, traverse our city, vacation in our city, come from out of state. It would criminalize all of them in terms of the ordinance if the amendment is not put forth. The other issue is that these are people that have trained with these magazines for 30 years or more, are very familiar with them, are highly disciplined, and why, if there were an active shooter situation, would we want to limit that type of an individual from neutralizing and providing for public safety for the community? And so, Chief Beck supports this amendment. To the reserve piece, we have Level 1 reserves that enjoy peace officer status 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but we also have Level 2 and Level 3 reserves that are peace officers while on duty. And so, if the exemption for them were to not pass, then they would not be allowed to possess that magazine once they left the station. So, they would come to the station, provide a tour of duty in a black and white police vehicle, and then we would have to identify a way to then take that magazine away from them until they're ready to serve their next tour of duty. So, it would impact our Level 2 and Level 3 reserves. We believe the amendment would be in the best interest of the community and the police department in terms of that piece, that amendment as well.
All right, thank you very much. I'll just close with this, and let me just add to that. It's not just the while on duty for those reserve officers. They also have to drive to various ranges to qualify on a regular basis with their high-capacity magazine. It's part of the policy. There'd be no way to do that. So, therefore, every agency in California under post, it's allowed. That's why it's a technical amendment. Having said that, many of you heard from different opinions legally that this could be challenged and we would lose. The fact that they are not unique from an average citizen, which under LEOSA isn't true, and we have a lot of different attorneys that have spoke to that and said that's absolutely false. And in fact, under LEOSA, it says qualified retired law enforcement officers must also carry the photographic identification issued to them by the agency for which they were employed and have now been separated. It goes on through several descriptions and delineates specifically what a qualified retired law enforcement officer is and how they've separated from service. Authorized by law to engage in or supervise the prevention, detection, investigation, prosecution, or the incarceration of any person in violation of the law, has statutory powers of arrest or apprehension, is not under influence of alcohol or intoxicated or a hallucinant drug, is not prohibited by federal law from possessing the firearm. There is a long laundry list that already identifies what that retired officer is and able to carry under LEOSA in any state. And so, that's already been done, and it's not unique, and it is, it is unique as it's not just a CCW. It's a very specific type of CCW for retired officers in good standing that are qualified. And it's not automatic, and they don't get it just because they've separated from service. And they have to go in on a regular basis, in fact, and maintain qualifications and get recertified by the department that signs off on it. So, it's very different than just a citizen carrying a CCW, and so, I wanted to point that out, and because I don't believe that other opinions that have been shared have pointed that out. I ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have questions about both pieces of this issue, both reserve and peace officer. I've been wrestling with this, and I've come to the decision that I'm willing to go along with the reserve officer piece. The retired officer piece, I still have problems with, both in terms of the legal questions and in terms of whether it's good policy. I think what Mr. Englander said, showing example after example of retired officers coming in and saving a situation, I don't disagree with. And if we were talking about taking all guns away from retired officers, I would oppose that. But what we're talking about is large capacity, large-capacity guns, and in that case, I'm not sure there are many cases that you could point to where you absolutely needed to spray 20 or 30 bullets to make your situation go as you would want to. The danger is that retired police officers are not necessarily magically any different than anybody else. If you have a situation where someone was depressed or had other problems 30 years after they retired from the LAPD, there's nothing magical that keeps them from being an active shooter. It's not going to happen very often, but it doesn't happen that often with any particular occupation of, or segment of society, but as a whole, it's becoming a serious problem in this country, and that's why we limit the magazine. I don't see that retired officers couldn't survive with a lower-capacity magazine and some clips and be able to operate just as effectively in that situation, but if they themselves became an active shooter, which is unlikely but not an impossibility, and we have seen that, we would be unable to defend against that as successfully because we were allowing them to have larger-capacity magazines. I mean, the purpose of the lower-capacity magazine is when there's a massacre situation that you can jump in, and when they're changing clips, limit the damage. I'm not sure I see the difference here. I mean, it's certainly less likely, but not impossible, and so, I would feel uncomfortable in voting for the peace officer piece, the retired peace officer piece. I don't know if we have a way to separate that out. I would rather not have to vote against the whole thing, but I certainly have qualms on both ends in terms of allowing retired officers to continue carrying high-capacity magnets.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to follow up a little bit on the line of questioning that Mr. Corretts was asking. And first, I want to ask about the reserve officers. My understanding is that there's two different levels of reserve officer, Level 2 and Level 1. Is that correct?
Three, Councilmember. Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3.
Okay. And this exemption would cover all three levels?
The ordinance treats Level 1 like... The ordinance treats Level 1 like it would any other on-duty peace officer. Level 1, per the penal code, enjoys peace officer status 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so they wouldn't be impacted by the ordinance, much like a full-duty active peace officer wouldn't be impacted by the ordinance.
Under the various classifications of reserve officers, are all of them properly trained in the use of high-capacity arms?
Yes. They are all properly trained. They all have to qualify. We use those reserves in different capacities, Councilmember. Level 3 is not used in the same capacity as a Level 1 or a Level 2. But they're all, to be in possession of that weapon, they have received training at the police department. They have been qualified. They have been certified.
But many of the lowest level, they don't tend, they only, I've been told, only carry firearms for sort of ceremonial opportunities and don't usually do patrol. Is that incorrect?
The Level 3 would, an example may be a parade, maybe the front desk at a police station. They are armed. They are qualified. But their capacity in terms of what we ask them to do and what we allow them to do is different than the Level 2 or a Level 1, if that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you. As for the retired officers, I understood Mr. Corretts' line of questioning, and I'm very sympathetic to it. What I have heard as sort of a counterpoint to that is that the retired officers have been trained and for a number of years have used a higher-capacity magazine. And as a result of muscle memory, it would be confusing or disorienting in an active shooter situation if they were to help out if suddenly they had a lower-capacity magazine. Is that correct?
Let me answer the question like this, Councilmember. When we're talking, what we're really talking about, and if I can use an average, a Beretta is a very common law enforcement-related weapon. It holds 15 rounds in the magazine. And so we're not talking about some extraordinary number of bullets. We're talking about five more above what the ordinance would be. And so in a situation where we had an active shooter, where a reserve may be present, in my professional opinion, I would want that retired officer to have the 15 and not the 10, because that extra five rounds may provide for public safety. And at the end of the day, the most important thing the police department does is keep our community members alive.
Okay. Got it. Just had a final question. It's for City Attorney. I wonder if City Attorney's Office could opine on the different opinion of whether or not we're sort of in a legal mess if we approve these exemptions or not approve these Is that an open-session question?
I might be able to make it appropriate for open session. David Michelson, Office of the City Attorney, with me is Brian Sotelli, also with our office. Our office did provide two confidential reports a while back as to these two pending exemptions, the one for retired peace officer, the other for reserve peace officer. We stand by the legal advice we provided. We would not be discussing the legal advice in open session. That would require a closed session. Closed session is not agendized. I will say that the ordinance does have a severability provision in it. In case we were challenged and were to lose, ideally, the rest of the ordinance would remain legally sound.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell. In fact, before I call him, Mr. O'Farrell, Michael, Dave, just give us an extra minute on the severability clause. So explain that, just a little more detail.
So many of, David Michelson, City Attorney, many of the city's ordinances contain severability clauses. In the event an ordinance is challenged in court, and if the judge determines that a portion of the ordinance is, for instance, unconstitutional, ideally, our office could convince the judge not to throw the entire ordinance out as unconstitutional, but just to remove surgically that part of the ordinance that has been found legally infirmed. There are times when a judge will not agree to that. There are times when a judge will say the provision that was found to be unconstitutional is too sort of intertwined with the rest of the ordinance. So we would have the ability to certainly make the argument to the court if one or more portions of this ordinance were to be challenged successfully, that we nonetheless could have the remainder, the balance of the ordinance, still survive judicial scrutiny and remain on the books.
Okay. That's a very important component, and I just wanted you to expand on it. That's something that I know many of us used when we were in Sacramento to make sure that an entire piece of legislation wasn't. So anyway, thanks for—
Certainly, just a quick follow-up. Of course, there's no guarantee the judge will agree as to the severability. Also, there's an attorney's fees component to this. Even if it were to be severed, the loss in court would typically yield an attorney's fees a damage award against the city.
Now, I get that. You just don't want to pass legislation that could be thrown out because one component, and this is an extra level of protection. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, first of all, want to say that I am so proud to support the groundbreaking gun control legislation sponsored by our colleague, Paul Krikorian. That has gained national attention, as it should, because it's such a wonderful, well-thought-out piece of legislation that this council fully supports. I also want to thank you, Ms. Englander, for your leadership on these amendments and City Attorney's Office, the LAPD. I feel that we're on pretty firm ground and that we have set the table as best as we possibly can. I am of the firm belief that once a cop, always a cop. And it seems to me very curious that upon the immediate retirement of a peace officer, that all of a sudden, we're going to take away certain extremely well-trained capabilities and, as you said, Chief Albanese, put ourselves in the business of actually criminalizing retired peace officers. I have a real problem with that. I would love to live in a world that was free of guns, free of active shooters, free of crazy people willing to just go out and wantonly kill others. But that's not the world we live in. We live in a very dangerous world, a very overarmed society here in the United States, and probably tens of thousands of people who should not possess firearms possess them and don't intend on doing good things with them. I feel much more secure with reserve officers and retired police officers being out and about in this dangerous world, fully equipped to handle emergency situations that spring up out of nowhere. And I don't need to elaborate on any of those because it's ever-present in the news on a daily basis. So I feel that I do want to really stand up for the LAPD on this one. We have police officers who have given their lives to make Los Angeles safer. And I would hate the thought of taking away that tool upon retirement. I think it is a level of protection that we need, and I think it's a level of protection that retired officers have earned that provides for a safer society in Los Angeles. So I urge an eye vote also on this. I think we're on as firm of ground as we possibly can be, and I think it's sensible legislation. And I just want to stand up for our reserve officers and our current and retired police officers. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
I just want to answer the question I put out and maybe make a motion. Can we sever this?
Well, I'm going to defer to Mr. Englander, where it relates to bifurcating.
I think, well, I'm going to speak to that in my close, so we'll keep that out there. But I would rather, I think, keep it together, quite frankly, after talking to many folks, particularly with what the City Attorney said, that, you know, if it's challenged, they could challenge a piece of it. And I'll tell you right now, I just got alerted. There's an active shooter situation happening this second in California. 20 people are down. It's in San Bernardino at the Convention Center. And I'm not going to use this moment about this. I'm just going to tell you this, that I hope that all those people are okay and the issue is resolved quickly. But I was just notified a second ago.
Okay.
But I would rather we didn't.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to Mr. Corretts.
Well, at your request, I'm not going to sever it, but I will then have to vote against it.
Okay. Mr. Englander, to close.
I just want to close with this. For those of you that had made the arguments about high capacity, if you need to feel a little more comforting, knowing that LiOSA does specifically ban, it does not extend the machine guns, destructive devices, silencers. The whole idea is that it's only for what the officers have been carrying and are trained with and not criminalizing police officers that have served for 30 or 40 years of having high-capacity magazines in their own homes, and that's what they've been trained with. We've already said they have to be and shall be locked up in the city of L.A., and we all support that. I think in society with what we're dealing with today, we don't have officers that can be everywhere all the time. And we've never had a situation, it was stated earlier, that we've had active shooter situations with retired officers. Absolutely false. It's never happened. If somebody can find a case, I'd love to hear it, but it's never happened. We've had officers dishonorably discharged that have been fired, but we haven't had that situation. Could it have happened? Anything can happen. But I would trust that 30- or 40-year officers that have put their families and themselves on the front line to protect us have really our best interests at heart. And we're not talking about taking their guns away. We're talking about changing their training and experience and really, quite frankly, making us less safe if we didn't pass it. So again, I strongly urge for your eye vote. Thank you.
Okay. Let's, Madam Clerk, prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 4 noes.
Okay. Public comment was satisfied in committee. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that item will go over for one week, to December 9th, for a second read.
All right. So let's now go into the special.
Very good, sir. As we recess the regular and go into the special meeting, Blumenfeld, Buzkaino, Cidio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Tassen, Weisar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 15 members present.
Mr. Price.
Mr. President, there may be a conflict. I'm going to excuse myself for this.
Okay. And we'll take you, remove you from the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr.—
Mr. President, item 21 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. So without objection, that item is now before this body. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the courtesy of waiving this from committee because it's a time-sensitive matter. Colleagues, as we all know, we have a crisis of homelessness in Los Angeles, and one of the greatest lost opportunities to help house homeless veterans has been the West LA VA campus, which for years has gone underused and has not been primarily serving veterans, those who need housing and those who just need medical service. As a result of a lawsuit a couple of years ago by the ACLU and others, the VA was forced to come to terms with the fact that they hadn't been providing the services they need and are now engaged in a very ambitious and aggressive master plan process to transform that campus into being much more focused on veteran services. They are going to release their final draft of their EIR in January. To actually make a reality out of everything that they are asking, there is a piece of federal legislation that needs to be passed, which would allow organizations such as New Directions and others to actually build housing on that campus and provide those services. That piece of legislation is cosponsored in the Senate by our two senators and at the House level by Representative Ted Lieu. This resolution would ask that the city go on record in favor of that legislation, which has a hearing in just a few days. And it would also close a loophole by asking that the legislation specifically be amended so that the master plan include, or the legislation include, the ability for the Purple Line Subway to be built at the VA. It has been planned for a very long time to have a subway stop there. Our former colleague, Mr. Yaroslavsky, noticed a problem in the legislation and properly identified it. And so this resolution also asks that that be corrected as well. So I'd ask for an eye vote.
Okay. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I really want to thank Councilman Bonin for his leadership on this issue. I just wanted to make a point that each year, roughly 12,000 military veterans settle in Los Angeles as they transition out of the military, and they join the 325,000 currently living here in Los Angeles. But for far too long, we've collectively failed to ensure a transition back into civilian life. 15% of post-9/11 veterans in Los Angeles have reported being homeless in the past year, and over a quarter reported a lack of consistent housing in the past two months. The number jumps to 40% if we include situations in which the veterans stayed with a relative or a family member, or at a friend's home, hotel, motel, jail, or even hospital. This isn't to say that we haven't made headway. Thus far, the city has overseen housing of more than 4,000 homeless veterans, and the 387-acre West LA campus is going to be a tremendous tool in assisting with a continued effort. In a city as large as ours, what's lacking is the critical to the transition back to civilian life and a much-needed part of rehabilitation and reintegration, is to access a reliable and cost-effective mode, and to access a reliable and cost-effective mode of transportation. In addition to serving a very young and mobile demographic in West LA, the station would provide veterans throughout the city with ready access to supportive housing, health care, education, and vocational training necessary to successfully transition back to civilian life. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Bonin, for being a champion on this issue, and I urge an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Bonin, I have some public comment cards, so I'm going to call Mr. Previn, Ms. McAllister, Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Please come forward. You don't have to be in that order, whoever gets there first.
Greetings. It's Eric Previn from CD2, and I'm supportive of this idea to coordinate with Metro, to create all those great things that Mr. Rue just mentioned for the veterans in Westwood. Sadly, of course, we've been waiting for this for a very long time, and the period between now and when this gets done is enormous and painful to even contemplate. But, you know, this is certainly an opportunity to be cheerful as it goes toward the government, the feds, to hope that they do approve this. And of course, it's always worth commending Supervisor Yaroslavsky for, on a pro bono basis, noting various items and bringing them forward to help. I appreciate that.
Okay. Ms. McAllister.
I'd like for people to know that I don't think we need a subway there. Housing is the issue here. We don't need a metro subway. When you start throwing in other things, the veterans are going to come up short. Now, for people who think this council is doing something for the veterans, they're not. This is what happened. January 20th, 2015, the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs announced a legal settlement that will transform its sprawling West Los Angeles campus, that's what this is, into a center of permanent housing for homeless veterans and curtail the controversial practice of leasing VA facilities to corporations and other non-government entities. Under the agreement, the VA will appoint by October a national homelessness expert to develop a master plan for how best to use that 387-acre property. Options could include renovating existing VA buildings and constructing new facilities for transitional housing and permanent housing with drug treatment, mental health counseling, and other supportive services. Now, for the record, this VA property lawsuit in January 29th, California section, it is an article about a legal settlement over the use of the Veterans Affairs Campus in West Los Angeles, said that by October, a homelessness expert would be hired. Now, the VA and its legal opponents must also—
Please, Ms. McAllister, you have to get back on the subject. This is about legislation that's moving through the federal government. Go ahead.
Let me finish. I'm a teacher. I mean, I've been teaching for many years, so that's just my nature to teach. But I'm giving people some history. We have veterans, and a lot of them are African-Americans, living on Skid Row. I want some housing for Black veterans. Don't bring—
This is about legislation that's moving through the federal government. Go ahead.
Let me finish. I'm a teacher. I mean, I've been teaching for many years, so that's just my nature to teach. But I'm giving people some history. We have veterans, and a lot of them are African-Americans, living on Skid Row. I want some housing for black veterans. Don't bring these illegal aliens who are veterans of Mexico up in here throwing them in our housing for veterans, for the people of this nation. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, I believe you're next, followed by Mr. Spindler, followed by Ms. Ramirez.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. It was very important. Now, the metro subway stop wouldn't cost the VA much, but it would cost the taxpayers much, if amended, to authorize the VA to allow the construction operation of a metro subway stop. Now, is there any public good to this? In 1980, MTA, RTD at the time, predicted, forecasted 300,000 boardings by the year 2000, weekday boardings. Right now, 15 years after that deadline, they're at 140,000 boardings. Oh, but it'll go up. No, no. Ridership is going down in the past two years, from 150 to 140. Another reason for no metro subway stop is we have the most racist subway system in America. Take a look at all the other cities in America. It's not 85 to 90% minority. Only in this city is the ridership 85 to 90% minority because all the limp-dick liberals are interested. Now, there's a good point in building this so they can get contracts with their friends. But I really want you to realize that the purpose of building west of La Brea is so that the wealthy Jews who live west of La Brea...
Stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh.
The subway is for the wealthy Jews to have minorities come and clean their houses.
Okay, Mr. Spindler.
Why are we mixing a metro subway stop with veterans' housing? That has about as much to do with a convention on weapons and cocksucking. It has nothing to do with one versus the other.
You're off topic, Mr. Spindler.
Stop interrupting me.
No, no, Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, you're off subject. Get off again, and you forfeit your time. All I ask you guys to do is stay on subject. That's all. And if you're off, then your time is gone.
Fucking consideration of cocksucking fucking resolution relative to fucking establishing the city's fucking position regarding fucking similar fucking legislation authorizing the United States Department of Veterans Affairs to carry out enhanced use lease agreements, not a subway fucking station. No subway station in veterans' housing. Veterans' housing is not a subway station. These people need to have rehabilitation. They need to have housing. Listen to Councilman Rue's comments. You need to have the veterans that are homeless off the streets and in housing. If you keep tangling up stuff that is not germane to housing, you will never get these people housing because nobody in a Republican-controlled Congress is going to give you money for a metro subway stop at West Los Angeles because the ridership is down. And because you don't listen to the people, you don't listen to the facts that this is a waste of money, you don't help the veterans. You're only doing this to get your pork for your metro subway station that nobody wants or uses or needs. They get that off of there and just use the money only for veterans' housing and rehabilitation, like one of your councilmen said, because he's right. We have to stop this. Give our veterans housing and give them rehabilitation now and stop the subway shit.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Hunt, followed by Mr. Muhammad.
Thank you. Dianne Feinstein, Barbara Boxer, Ina Tia Tacos, Loretta Lynn Sanchez's, the self-serving leeches, they neglected all our impoverished and homeless military veterans, including all our Vietnam vets who died on the streets of Los Angeles. That is shameful. Now, I don't trust them, and I know that there's an ulterior motive, but here I am desperately wanting and have for so many years, fighting for our military veterans. As a matter of fact, it was Fred outside in the morning who came by to say good morning to me while I got up in the morning on the streets. He is homeless. And many of them hurt. They're hungry. Their hands are dried and chapped. They are, they are, they've given up to a man's ego. That is sad because a man's ego is sacred. And these military veterans have given up. They don't stand here and fight. They don't take on this agenda. They just want to die. That's all. And many of them will tell you, "I just want to die." Can we not stand up together as a country and fight for these military veterans? They deserve more than these pussy gangbangers and wetbacks.
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject.
How dare we, how dare we not help these military veterans and the Veterans Administration ought to be shot and shaken to their knees because they have committed atrocities, high treason against these military veterans and their families, who their children also are committing suicide. Please, again, we need immediately, urgently, get these military veterans off the streets. I will stand aside for one. Please, let's get them off the streets now, not tomorrow, but now. And get these goddamn gangbangers and wetbacks back to where the hell they came from. It's enough, enough. And let's feed these military veterans now. Provide them housing today. Provide them meals today, even at Grand Park. Go to Grand Park, please, and provide them meals. There are no setups to feed these military veterans and pilots.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hunt, followed by Mr. Muhammad.
The Red Chief Hunt here, for the record. That's a hard act to follow. If I was Bill Rosenthal, I would vote yes on this right here. Give it to Bill Rosenthal and everybody vote yes on this one.
Mr. Muhammad.
My name is Oscar Muhammad. I speak for the oppressed, I speak for the struggling, poor, and the street for court of change. I look at the racism and our political system that we have. We have one race get more proper attention than the other race, and then veterans...
Speaker is off topic.
Come on, Mr. Muhammad, deal with the veteran issue.
I'm getting there. The white veterans, they go to Westwood, they get assistance properly. The black veterans have to go to the Veterans Administration out there in Long Beach, and they're neglected. They don't have no beds to come in the hospital, to be nurtured properly. We have racism in politics. We should have political responsibility. We should try to find a way to assist, to disable people in America better than what we do. We should try to find a way to assist many homeless people who cannot help themselves in a proper way. We should try to end this destructive capitalist system we're under. We should try to find a way to end this destructive political system that we have today. We should try to find a way to create a system that can...
Come on, get right back, Oscar.
That we can treat majority of the people in America fairly because we have so few peoples controlling the large amount of assets today. A large amount of wealth is on a few people's hands, and the wealth is not being fluent properly in America.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes public comment on this item. Let's, Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Bonin wants an urgent fourth with. Let us vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We should adjourn. The special return to the regular. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So that brings us where?
That brings us back to general public comment for items not on today's agenda.
Okay. So let's pick up where we left off. Mr. Previn, Ms. Ramirez, and Mr. Muhammad.
It's Eric Previn from CD2, and I felt that you improperly denied comment on item 13 to members of the public because Mr. Englander stood up and spoke about it, and others spoke about it. There was lots of interesting information revealed, and you should have let us comment. So that's unfortunate. In New York today, Sheldon Silver yesterday, he was convicted, one of the state's most powerful politicians. He was, he's a Manhattan Democrat who was convicted of profiting from his public service. They didn't have a smoking gun or any big suitcase full of cash. They had a slow trickle drip of impropriety. This has been endemic in Sacramento, and we've seen some evidence of that here. I don't want to accuse anybody of anything, but I want to just quote from a Newsday article that when someone like that, who's a respected leader of a respected body, is convicted of seven counts, it raises the question, is it really a respected body? And so, nobody has been frogmarched out of here recently, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Muhammad.
Thank you. I think everybody needs to possess a large-capacity magazines and grenade launchers, including retired law enforcement, military veterans, and law-abiding homeless military and homeless persons, because we are under siege by racist, hate-mongering wetbacks and chungo Latino gang-banging pussies and their criminal empire.
We have kids here, Ms. Ramirez.
Therefore, we do need, we need these magazines and blow those mothers to pieces. Having said that, now, all our stores, retail stores, like Chinatown Walmart, located at 701 West Caesar East Chavez Avenue, Los Angeles, California, hires these wetbacks and gangbangers as security. I had two security idiots call the LAPD, Officer Durazo and Martin, and they came out on November 28th about 7:15 p.m. through 7:20 p.m. because they were called because I was being harassed by these wetback chungo gangbangers.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Muhammad, followed by Mr. Hunt. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Oscar Muhammad. I speak for the oppressed, I speak for the struggling, poor, and the street for court of change. I see where the construction down on Exposition in Crenshaw, with the MTA stuff trying to go through Crenshaw in Verna. But we should direct that type of money another way. We should try to build more affordable houses for people to live in because many peoples cannot meet the standards living today, and they're losing their places. And many people, they are living in people's rooms and houses, and people's rooms and houses, and I don't understand how they get paid rent. They don't have license to do it, though. And we have many homes out here have group homes, and they be on the west side, and they should be under different type of structure and the stuff to be in individual homes, though. And we should move the homeless from downtown Los Angeles that's sleeping on the Street Angeles. We should clean up that spot, and we should structure the homeless life more better. We should bring some into the homeless life and give them a better outfit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Muhammad. And I'd like to recognize, we just have a bunch of young visitors that are with us today. Could you all stand up? What school are you from? This, Fourth Street? Let's give them a round of applause. Welcome. Welcome. It's good to see you. Look at yourself on television. All right? Wave to your parents. All right, welcome. Now, you got to let us go back to work, but welcome. We're glad to see you. You made our day. So if we could have Mr. Hunt, followed by, I think it's Ms. McAllister. So please, come on forward. Come on, come on, kids. See you around. Okay, Mr. Hunt, please come forward.
Good evening. The Red Chief Hunt on the record again. I want to just let you guys know, number one, why I'm down here. You guys stole my job, and I'm not going to leave. I'm going to be down here. But I want to serve you guys with the ripple effect is of me being down here. I have tickets of the first unlawful assembly with the second ticket, which is causing the city painful, painful repercussions. So let's get smart. Let's not do things twice every 10 years. I'd like Sergeant-at-Arms to pass this out so that they can see the ripple effect for the city. I am the Red Chief Hunt. If you abide by what I say, you guys will do well. The Red Chief Hunt. Today's a nice day. Thank Supervisor Bird for coming. She brings out the best in me. Thank you again, and thank you again.
Okay, Ms. McAllister.
I'd like to address the word "wetback" that I used. It's not an offensive term. Illegal immigrants were sent back by force and armed military in the 1950s because they were here and our WWII veterans didn't have jobs. So that's the term "wetback," and a lot of the illegals here today are descendants of wetbacks. Now, those wonderful children that we saw here, they're great, but many of them are probably illegal. When President Trump gets in office, I want him to go back five generations, not just one, five generations, and get these illegals out of here. The problems that we have in this nation, they're all stemmed from illegal immigration. Every last one. Black folks being killed by the millions. There were turf wars where these Mexicans came in and killed black men specifically. You can't even find a black community in Los Angeles except for Limerick Park. This is around the nation. We're going to get them out of here if I have to go to war and carry a weapon myself. We're going to get these illegal aliens out of this nation.
Okay, now, I just want to say for those that are watching, this council does not support hate speech, hate speak, and, no, no, you are disrupting the meeting. You are disrupting the meeting, so please be quiet. It's my time now. It's not your time. So I just want, for those that are watching, to know that this council does not support hate speak. All right? With that said, Mr. Clerk, what is before this council?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and they are referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, members. Any announcements? Then let's all rise for, Mr. Bloomingfield has an announcement.
Having a holiday open house this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 in my district office in Reseda on Van Owen and Van Alden. All are welcome, and especially, we're also doing a holiday toy drive, so if you come and wish to bring an unwrapped toy, we're accepting those and giving those to needy children in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. I'm going to look to my left side to see if there are any adjourning motions. That's Mr. Fuentes's side. Now, I look to my right, Mr. Keretz's side. I don't see any adjourning, so, members, this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you Friday. Friday, Friday in Van Nuys.